All right, um, it is six thirty, uh, let's go ahead and start comments to order. Please turn off your cell phones. It's a morning speaker, the public comments portion of the meeting is, please comment card, turn it to the clerk. Does include the comment or the matter that you wish to raise on the card in order to be heard. We have to please bring, um, comments until the public comments portion of the conference is ready. Um, we'll start up with the pledge of allegiance and the dedication and then I'll read it again. Do not carry a flag in the state. A pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the last statement from Commissioner, please say it again.
Uh, we have called out this again that we've come today, thank you dear God, thank you for another group, okay? Thank you for our lives, dear God, and we ask you to guide us in our need to help develop the business of a long time. So we actually invest all our citizens and all our friends all over the land with our church to see, shutting prison ban, the bereaved family, churches out, you got it here in that house, amen.
Um, I'd like to welcome citizens, the examine, if anybody comes in after an examination, um, it's such a beautiful event. We have a special guest tonight, and I want to introduce to everybody. We have, um, Ms. Brianna Baker, and she is live to her reading, and, um, we do need our ladies coming up. And I'd like to ask her this time, she will, um, sit in front of her camera and introduce herself and tell me about what she's doing.
Today we are, may we pray, may we pray, may we pray, may we choose a, help me, um, to talk more. And everybody else that's here today, my name is Brianna Stumpf Baker. I am a resident of the community and a free agency writer. I am currently in front of you to, um, like community, to improve public access, to public information. I have published a book, I have been published to a book along with twelve, and I have seen a lot of people. I have a very, uh, free access business, if you may call it that. There's mostly writing articles about businesses, trying to look for small businesses for individuals and contributions to the community. However, as of recently, I have done individual live streams for the community as well. And I want to discuss the, you know, our home, um, and the needs. We have that which are action for elevating the quality of the, I have less interest in community. And I believe that, and I believe that people are really grateful that they're coming to serve and support life.
Thank you. Um, once we can get into order. We have three minutes for that first. And that concludes our public hearing for draft ordinance of pleasure and reading for last one. For your old business, new business. Have a budget form from Commissioner and our budget officer Clay Webb. And add any additional new business that we may have. We will have a public, oh, comments for citizens, budget comments from myself and the commissioners, and then I'll draw a list. At this time, I want to ask, uh, for a relationship approved to get them over there. On behalf of, um, by others, thank you. Before we move to the reading of the minutes, the public, for the rest of the afternoon, that we have on. Please commit for the public hearing budget draft ordinance that we have on Tuesday, maybe at seven thirty P M here at the community law office department. The public hearing was called over by Mayor Proctor, the community state senate, she notified citizens that she would be converting to the mayor of Rock in the next week. She goes from everyone to the public hearing, may I ask you to leave the order. Kelly Hunter, town clerk, and Heidi Talker addressed the public and made a good budget message. Commissioner Clay Webb, budget officer, presented the budget ordinance draft for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Mayor Proctor Pennant opened the floor for public comments and questions. She requested that anyone wanting to speak would state their name for the record and would limit their comments and questions to three minutes. There were no questions for comments from residents being in the public. Commissioner Webb made a motion to adopt the budget draft ordinance and make available to the public for review. Commissioner Horn said that the motion had carried unanimously. For closing comments, Commissioner Webb said that the town did have to make some cuts to a few different areas to meet the needs of the town and hold the cost. The board is looking at different ways to increase revenue and is looking forward to doing some different loan raising, loan raisers, and again, to help offset some of these cuts. Commissioner Webb made a motion to adjourn the public hearing, Commissioner Worsley said the motion had carried unanimously. The next day for the adoption of the budget ordinance is scheduled for Friday, June twenty first, twenty twenty four, and now a copy in at the town hall in the conference room. That was the first. We'll make the motion to three minutes for the public hearing of the budget draft ordinance. I'm just going to have it for, um, the budget office, the budget office, or it's on the other end. Our neighbor, um, you might have. Great, please, um, shoot it. Okay, the board information of the town of Cleveland, our regular meeting, Tuesday, June the eleventh, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P M, the community law office department. Located at one fifteen South Mount Street, the end two seventy eight, one nine. Presenting the mayor, Land Rock, Commissioner Cedric Barnes, Jamie Seif, Peter Pennant, Clay Webb, and Monica Worsley. Also present was town clerk Kelly Hunter. Mayor Proctor Pennant called meetings to order and gave notice that she would be running lead due to Mayor Rock being on the way to see. Commissioner Barnes offered the dedication. Mayor Proctor Pennant acknowledged citizens and read through the agenda as presented. Commissioner Webb made a motion to approve the agenda without amendment, and Commissioner Worsley stated the motion had carried unanimously. The minutes from the regular meeting held on May fourteenth were read by town clerk Kelly Hunter. Commissioner Webb made a motion to approve the minutes from the May fourteenth meeting. Commissioner Worsley stated the motion had carried unanimously. For old business, Commissioner Hennett gave an update on the town T-shirt sale. Today is the last day of future ordering with this first order. Commissioner Hennett also gave notice of the safety hazards associated with driving V T Vs and dirt bikes on the streets. Anyone caught riding leaves recreation vehicle to obtain without proper tagging, you are owed to proper places. Commissioner Webb reminded citizens of the rules associated with yardways removal, that made items are to be placed at the park every other Wednesday, and loose items are to be back. He gave an update on the remodeling taking place at the town hall. Commissioner Webb presented the site plan for the grounds around the town hall. Contractor Terry Webb and John Slough, the resilience project coordinator with the upper coast and plain council of government, met about the maintenance taking in addition to those various trees and bushes around the grounds. The site plan is available for viewing tonight at the town hall. An update was given on the C D D chief granite status in our previous meeting with Tyler Khan, so the upper coast and plain council of government was discussed. Work will hopefully begin on that project towards the end of December, the first of January. Zoning and town ornaments are currently being updated. We are scheduled to have a final draft by the end of July, maybe ready to present to the public in the August four meeting. Commissioner Worsley reminds citizens that the town park is available for rent. Is required for residents to pay a park reservation, excuse me, to complete a park reservation warrant at the town hall and pay a rental fee. The town library, if you work, some are still set in donations. We are excited about this and look forward to having the kids and adults come and check out books. Commissioner Webb personally made a motion to approve the closing of business portion of the meeting. Commissioner Webb stated the motion had carried unanimously. For new business, town clerk Kelly Hunter presented the quote report and gave an accounting of both completed and upcoming required reports retained and expense totals. It lists all deals and invoices paid and causing were due to the council's agreement approved. Commissioner Worsley made a motion to approve all bills and invoices paid. Commissioner Webb stated the motion had carried unanimously. The clerk presented the deal for the audit services for fiscal, for the, excuse me, for the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year in the amount of six thousand dollars from CPA Greg Redman. She also presented the contract for audit services where it's upcoming twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five fiscal year. Commissioner Webb made a motion to approve the six thousand dollar payment for services and approved the contract for audit services for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five fiscal year. Commissioner Worsley stated the motion had carried unanimously. The deal from the board of elections for municipal elections in the amount of two thousand six hundred and eight dollars to seventy thousand was presented to the board for review. Commissioner Webb made a motion to pay the deal from the board of elections in full amount. Commissioner Worsley stated the motion had carried unanimously. Commissioner Worsley made a motion to approve the quote report, Commissioner Webb stated the motion had carried unanimously. Budget officer, Commissioner Webb presented the monthly budget review. He stated that the current fiscal year is coming to a close and we will need to have a working to take a final look at the budget and make any amendments. There are a few areas that we have gone over in calls and these will need to be looked at and reviewed. Commissioner Horn made a motion to approve the budget report. Commissioner Worsley stated the motion had carried unanimously. Commissioner Hennett asked citizens to please not cut the grass on the east half property. While the gestures appreciated due to risk and mobility, we are asking that you refrain from allowing grass in public, here, contracted with. Commissioner Hennett updated everyone on the success of the mobile mammogram unit. We surpassed our goal and have eighteen participants. We are hoping to make this an annual event that we can provide for the town and county. Commissioner Worsley informed everyone that the town newsletters will be handed out toward the door to save the cost of the minute out. It also gives commissioners a chance to see and interact with citizens. Commissioner Worsley also mentioned that the town has two maintenance systems, one is the anniversary grill and the other is the heat treats. Commissioner Webb rocks according to order in place for the business owner, Mike Sarah, regarding the gas pumps and the new needed grocery grill. He asked to either fix the gas pumps above ground or get new pumps to meet. He is asking the board for approval to have gas pumps at a new store and getting certified by the state. Commissioner Worsley made a motion to approve my caring report that the gas pumps have a new business and getting clear certification through the state. Commissioner Webb stated the motion had carried unanimously. Commissioner Horn made a motion to approve the closing of business, Commissioner Worsley stated the motion had carried unanimously. There were no public comments. Commissioner Webb made a motion to close the public comments portion, Commissioner Worsley stated the motion had carried unanimously. Mayor Ryan, thank you council, excuse me, thank everyone for their attendance and apologize for our illness and inability to see. All of the commissioners thank everyone for comments, Commissioner Webb made a motion to approve the closing of campus comments portion, and Commissioner Worsley stated the motion had carried unanimously. For adjournment, Commissioner Webb made a motion to adjourn the meeting, and Commissioner Worsley stated the motion had carried unanimously. Oh, our next break of the monthly meeting is scheduled for July ninth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P M at the community law office department. And those are your minutes. And a motion to approve the minutes, three. Um, paper. To old business, and first of all, I want to apologize for the last meeting with my lack of voice. Our permanent keeps saying I was unable to speak, so really bad for me. But I did apologize to the doctor, I had an upper respiratory infection, put behind my pillow, and loved your patients, but, and then that mask all the way, so it's a lot better, and I appreciate it. You take note and you need to tell us on the chart. There's something I want to clarify on for old business, if you, if you were listening during early minutes. When we have a public hearing and we have citizen comment portion, we have three minutes for citizens to speak during that time. When we have a regular board meeting, it's two minutes. Um, just so, you know, if there was a question about why there's three minutes for one meeting and two for the other, we did not make a mistake, and that's what we get to do. Three minutes for, um, public hearing, if citizens need to stay, you wait two minutes for, um, our regular board meetings. T-shirt, town T-shirt sales.
All right, just wanted to thank everyone that has ordered the T-shirts, does four. Our first T-shirt was, so ten, twenty-two T-shirts, and this is another hat on hers tonight, a bit of all about the, um, T-shirt. You could get one of the commissioners, or you can just come by the town hall, we do have some at the town hall for sale. We got the autumn action one, so if you want to purchase one, because, I know we got small, no, you small, medium, large, X large. And, yeah, a bunch of them, so just come back, and the T-shirts are twenty dollars, and again, we thank you for, um, supporting our T-shirt sale, but it don't end, end here. You can order anytime, I can, yeah, celebrate if you ever get to be high enough. But once we do, let everyone know, and also that, of course, planning council goes that, that July night, you can, every month, it's every Tuesday in the month. Well, this month of July is, we don't have a meeting, our next meeting is scheduled for August the twentieth. Thank you.
Um, for the C D D, she ran up there, um, I've been talking with Tyler, I saw her, um, Monday. I saw her for the fourth time, that's, um, met her Monday, and she brought something from, from the environment of health, who's doing a red on, study, in the old fire department, this fire station. Um, all the paperwork, the processes are in the process for this, it's a huge amount of work, um, Tyler's part, which is super this, with the council of governments, and making sure that every step is done, when it's supposed to be, and reporting at a timely manner. So if you make in the building Monday, for her to set up, it was ninety-four bricks and building, she set up her red on just, and she, sometimes tomorrow, go get a letter and take it off the wall. That's the next step, um, that we're having to do. So she said that just to let the board and citizens know that the environment review, which is very honest, and was the first part of, was underway. We're scheduled to have the environment review completed by July twenty eighth, so I'll just be sorry the next step of the process. And she's, she's doing a good job with people. Let's hope today you can let us know what's, um, and who we need to do with. Be glad. Um, as far as the new studies, we will be delivering those one more time. After that, they'll be available at the, the post office for the town hall. Okay, um, we have a guest, two for you, where you can talk to me about giving an update on the town hall renovations. Great.
Well, uh, most of you can see, most of the work has been completed. We're about seventy-five percent through the project, we expect to be completed in six weeks. Uh, we had some delays with some of the contractors having to wait for the contractor to run them in to get out of the way, so they can do their part. But most of all, the heavy lifting is done. Uh, the, we have a final checklist for small things that we missed, that need to be fixed or repaired. Had a couple of cracks in the sidewall, we're taking those out, they're going to get reformed next week. Uh, that may, uh, we're going to make a few changes to the gazebo, we didn't like the way the roof was stood on, so we're going to redo that. Uh, put new metal up there to make it meet our standards. Uh, the parking lots can finish, there's a little bit of grading to do around the edges to clean up for the rock, for all the other stuff. But hopefully in the next month, all those little things will be taken care of, the landscaping, which we get back in track, cut the grass. Uh, I would say by the end of July, people should be able to start accessing, you know, using the gazebo and walking the sidewall and cutting the cross, whatever else they want to do. But we're pretty much on target, uh, for the six, six-week, I would, being finished with everything. And, uh, having said that, if anybody needs more information, or to ask any other questions, um, when I have the answers, but I'll try.
No, we just appreciate all the work you've done so far, it was great. Um, I said we came right before you finished, we should.
Thank you, and it's not written in stone, it's not too late, so anyone who would like to make some little changes, or, you know, I'm willing to make some concessions, I mean, I've been lucky, because it has kind of allowed me to use my best judgment. You know, we talked about, you know, I'll take you, if you want to see something extra added, or change something, or a light here or there, whatever, I'll do my best to complement it. Don't, don't hesitate, if you don't have a number, you know, I'm sure one of these cancers will get to you. I'm, I'm available all the time.
Thank you. I don't know if the board has anything they want to add, but I'm positive that we have, I have been getting phone calls, visits, um, there's been a lot of times, like, my office has been poor part, and we run back toward, we're hitting this here mayor, she's been struggling. Um, I spent some time this morning, put my things back, and we want, probably said, do so, because it's fascinating to do with three weeks, travel, and that, and then that, um, was there, so I want to say, to say, to capture, before I learn, because there's been times, telling a dick, yeah, whatever it was, cheap art goes, or, um, fumes, paint fumes before, but we had a lot of people that had, this afternoon, one of the summer outfits, and it's, and then, I think, you call me here, we call, we're originally, I was about to do more, because, you know, our, our partner was double ring, who won the city, and he's just looking right, and just, he's so tired, so excited, here in the middle, and he's, he said, stop, someone start walking. Can I start walking, can I, can I follow it? And I told him, yes, he told me, um, we had one, one walkover that walks all the time, and she was moving it out, and she was saving it, ten to five, around seven. Um, so feel free to go ahead and start walking, if they're back there working, stay away from the work, but, you know, don't forget, don't let them start accessing. We have people coming up, you know, even windows, um, we put paper on, a lot of windows in my bathroom with the, held the door, because the kids are, and, um, we can't see in, we can't see out, so we're going to make some adjustments later. Um, but overall, I mean, everything is all very real, um, really smooth, getting a lot of compliments. Having, um, some outside sources want, um, to offer more possibilities of, of kind of grants, funding, or things that they do, share area of expertise, so, um, right, I count there again, the part this is where I'm at, and as long as they offer, I would sit, listen, and see what possibilities we can have, opportunity, access. So if you want to hear a link, if you want to make this possibility, um, time forward, um, pay the worst, we give, um, so far, we give caution, um, um, so that's my goal, is to continue to keep this, um, one case working. Um, additional old business, I have one thing I want to say about the district service, because we have certain concerns, people said that two months ago, that they, they started this on their own, and I tried to get phone calls, the text, and what the world's going on, and here in my yard, got the trip, my entry trash cans, or call, or a rail. Um, they didn't even give us nothing, and we have their contract, some businesses, some corporate addresses, not in the east, whatever, um, but just so you know, you're aware, it could happen to you, or happen somewhere else, you know, it's not, uh, not the board saying, neither the league, or you do the yard, strictly yardless, so, um, those kind of things, and if you have time to be, you should have more arch than they can, you can have, you can put stuff that you can, or take somewhere else, um, that's where we are with them, and, um, about yard ones, you know, the first thing, it's, it's, you play, but.
Um, yeah, just, just, just a long way, the address, um, has some quick ups, um, certain files have been left in certain areas, due to, they're, they'll be in, um, facets of link or, um, background requirements. Uh, just to remind everybody, there cannot be any longer than four feet of link, or a drag of six meters in diameter, um, due to easier handleable reasons, and, you know, just, uh, the fact that they have a trailer on top. Um, if it is passos, um, or you see several pieces that are passed back, and I, um, I would leave, um, and be addressed by citizens. Make sure they're right and equal size, and then we pick it up when next order. Uh, I do have one additional, this is through the mentor's last thing, but, um, this is June twenty seventh, okay, exactly, I'm gonna say it was, but, June twenty seventh, I did attend a, uh, financial training class for municipalities, uh, especially, um, in Rainwater, Agrochester, River Rock facility over there. Um, very similar class that Bailey, um, Blaine, and King took, um, together, um, very informative, uh, the other thing that we knew, or is, you know, how all financial processes, both leading, um, the fourth and seventh year olds, each person within the, you know, this catalog of structure, um, and the key roles they play in the financial decision status, and especially in the budgetary areas, so, uh, very informative class, and, um, that's just, uh, for the additional, um, six hour program. And, uh, we are products of, um, J M O's.
We went, you went on the first, first one, and say, we got the email, that, that, try and, twenty-seven.
I did.
All right, this is, um, this is the mandatory required training, and officials will all have that, as we discussed with Mark, although earlier, I'll look up the next list to see. We have a mandatory six hours that we have to go to the training, um, to satisfy the state treasurer's office, and what I really liked about it, we, we went to the person, it was very important. They offer heal the condition, they're, you type in a question, you should email, call him, they're, it's sort of a big, you know, crime, but the, um, the ones that are now working for, this is from, like, John, living in this town, so the ones who are now working for the league are the former state treasurer, Ursel, and her colleague, retired together, and were hired by the league. So they know exactly what we have to do, and they are now not in the role of, people had said president, they're now in the role of people in the league, who offer training, so they can come in, we can, or we can, so what's all the sense of that training? Um, and their journey to the, um, he, he weren't, say, his way of being retired, and he's now working for the league for a time, so.
Uh, financial director.
Right, right, and, um, so the two ladies that worked with him, shared this, and she was, we can't, first, we have to bring out, we're responsible in this mission, uh, twenty twenty two, um, we have the sixteen options to get off from the assistance list, and we're down to, right now, and it is, a lot of, we're sent to companies, yeah, because of natural side products, you know? But we can, we did, you guys sat there, and then all those, I believe, right?
And with all that experience?
Yeah, absolutely, they all give their comps to us, and, um, Zach's fresh, and Smiley's, yes, and, and a lot of that work, and, um, we met, we met a lot of people who were, hey, from other, not just towns in our area, from other regions, that we have called, um, or they have called, well, it's okay, and this, we have that, so I really like that, that we need other people who are in this acquisition, too, um, and we're all having to say the same thing, we're just required by the state, but kind of seeing where we are, if we're on as other municipalities in our, our regions, so, for that to say.
I'll give you, uh, several forms from Husky, from Asian, and, uh, there's a lot of sense that we have been in everyone, there is, if you can, it's to be able to pick this, to be sensitive.
Except that we get combinations, or, um, they have several different areas, several different locations, and they have each one, so they have ways they run, it's, like, doing one of those, so, um, we've got two, we want to work with, we have yours, and we're, and they do, and I was like, this, I don't know, so, everyone's a good job, I think, of helping, it was counties where they did not, kind of, that, for, they seem to work in. All right, and we've been working in front of the old business. I'm ready to look into it, do my best, oh, you. Okay, um, I'm cutting. All right, now we're gonna do business with the court report. All right, I want to pass down our pay, bills and invoices and our deposits for them all, and everybody can take a look at that and then. And I'm gonna start with, okay, this is the court report for June twenty twenty four. The quarterly tax base report for N C recording and N C employment commission report. June thirty ended the second quarter for the year, I'm working on completion, we took these reports, so they need to be done by the end of July. Power bill report, that includes the certified statement, the strength of the C and certified power bill map. That is due by July the first, I'm working on that currently. And then in August, I would have the extended report due for the power bill. For the L T C two oh three report, we submitted the first report in January of this year and this is semi annual report and it's due by the end of this month. Um, as far as the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three comment, our audit was submitted and approved by the local government commission on May the seventh. This date is within twelve months of fiscal year, the unit has therefore successfully completed, complied with the notice of noncompliance issue by the O C. For our fiscal year twenty three, twenty four audit, we're now working on meeting those documents together for the upcoming audit. I've kind of set a goal for myself to try to get all of that to regrettably optimize the terms of the comments. Um, as far as the office's state budget, budget and management, that report was already completed, it was, we're doing those quarters as well. Um, I've already submitted that in on July the second, we had no expenditures for this quarter. For our banking accounts and totals and our general pull-in, we have eight thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-six cents. And our power bill account, we have money for thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-six cents. And our new market account, we have paid three thousand six hundred and two dollars, two dollars and two cents. And in our straight safe grant fund, we have two hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents, so that gives us a total. Now our banking account, we have one hundred and seventy-three thousand thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Now the power deal is gonna change because, like I said, they were just on up on this next fiscal year. So once we submit that report, it should have numbers shifted a little bit, so I'll pass that down for you. And um, I have two items, two percent to you guys tonight. Um, both of them are regarding our insurance, I have the workers compensation with the North Carolina Interlocal Risk Management Agency. And the price for this is seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then for our property and liability funds of the Interlocal Risk Financing Fund of North Carolina. Um, this totals four thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and one cent, and this includes um, insurance on all our property and. So I'm gonna pass that down, so everyone can review that, and I'm gonna need a motion to approve the payment of those deals because they're over the threshold. Well, if you're still reviewing, um, Middles and Gil's play, I'm gonna figure it out, so the insurance is up, and um, go ahead. Ask for a motion to approve that we go and pay that.
I'll make a motion that we approve, make a, uh, the insurance on the road.
All right, all right. So, um, you got to repeat on, you know, through the initial? Yes, like if you're, the initial is the same as you send the, um. I'll be, I'm ready to put the day for everybody to put their. If anyone wants to take a look at that further and see all the details, if you're saying that covers that audit. I'll send the management's report for our board.
Do you approve the first report?
Okay, I'll send her through. Um, we're gonna do also the bus report from our commissioner, so I have a question off the table here.
Um, so we have shifted over to from our twenty twenty three, uh, twenty twenty three, from the following. Now we have our twenty twenty four, uh, part, um, July first. Um, we did finalize everything for that, we, we come on now, so um. I'm gonna have much to figure out at this point in time to this hour, but um, as we said, we have approved everything, we're making all of our, our, the year now, so. Um, I have a number of our numbers, figures, uh, that's a, uh, that will attract. So we are just stopping down. We get back some, some banks, some banks are here, there, to uh, help save some money, to help buy a good area that we need to, so. Um, we'll, we'll start, we, we should stay on, stay on the track, that's all.
The relationship, the, the relationship. I have to approve the budget before. Okay. Um, additional, we did have, I have two things and not, um, rehearsed it, did not give any sort of, like, papers up for this, and each other, we did a new letter. Um, back to David's trash service, this is new information, I have known subject. Um, they have been asking so long, actually, the old green cans are broken, they did a broken, broken all, um, or the wings are broken or damaged. What they're gonna be doing, and this is um, in your newsletter, little orange part right here, so you can write the date down and remember it. Because if you miss it, I don't know, they'll come to you again, but any parts that are broken, if you can put them out on the street, where you normally put your trash can. On Sunday evening of July fourteen, they will be around on that Monday to pick them up. They're going to recycle them or the parts or whatever, um, if it's after, from the broken cans, or they can use somewhere else. Then I asked that, I said, would you please not bring back any of that pretty pain, uh, factors? Do you have to do something, do they bring back any? Um, I am a part of the H town county get off this initiative and we met, um, June twenty seventh. Um, there are several members, um, that go over and say, give you an idea, they have a little bit of official, H town county school representative, H town D S S, H town capital department. They have two people from H town county, they're about eighteen over. Um, they have a nonprofit provider of services to even families, and two of those, they have, what they call members that law, which are people who are either, um. Employed with municipality or employed with the county, so it's a good global group of what we need to do in our certain areas to get off the list. This is an initiative, sort of a, it's a, um, against the foundation, because, um, to make safety, it's our city, H town county. Either the bottom of the, um, village or the top of the, and there's a lot more to do, it's gonna take, um. The people that are, this local effort is about a protection, uh, on that knowledge, you can name it. So we're gonna be looking at, or do the name is in the school system, to see how we can incline all of this, to feel, not only people, but maybe support the kids. Support the school, support the school, um, because the kids are a major, but H town county, so we're looking at how we can better, rather, our. Need for H town county and to hopefully offer to them that we want for kids as adults to come back on the street. Another thing that I have on this new business, this is such a nice story today, my kid, the one who did before he opened, needed a real grocery. Um, for house stores that I knew, he is currently in, um, more of which, he said, before he opened the store, he told his wife, I haven't had a vacation. He's been on the problem, he's been there for a while. He is right now, um, waiting on three comments. And so he's, he gives us comments that he, we're ready to go, everybody's ready to undo what they're doing. He says by the end of July, he should have a real store open, starting that, and obviously we'll have to pay a parking lot gas, so. Hopefully by the end of summer, we'll have a store with, um, real, as grocery, as gas, and new product line. So that's, that's a big plus for Aldous and Axel, and since you're sitting here, you're on the same, if that was different from the corner, like. You expected maybe when you open the counter.
My question? So, uh, yeah, it's a, that's a, about a one-year project there. There's a lot that needs to be done, uh. Right now, the plan is, the building that used to be the A B C store, my wife sells those artificial trees. So she gets about two hundred customers a month at our house. So she wants to move that into, uh, a retail spot where she can have a whole professional business. So that's the plan right now. The other store, it used to be a gas station, we're gonna make it a really nice building, it's gonna be an empty shell right now. But we're hoping that either we can come up with a good idea to use the building, or somebody else may have a good useful that we can work to go, or partner with somebody. If the guy across the street you just talked about, if his plans don't work out, we wanna have something in place. That if another company wants to put a gas station there, the infrastructure already be there, if they're a empty box and they just add their product. That, that's the one-year plan. You know, everything changes, but right now, that's our goal, is to make a, a really nice corner, that can attract people and community. And if somebody has a, an idea that they would like, you know, to present with and partner with me, we're open.
It sounds like it's really nice.
Yeah, and, and she's, she's hoping to contribute that over here, you know, and hopefully get some of this summer traffic that's going to the beach. You know, invite them in, and then maybe they'll, you know, take a tour of Canada and see some of the progress and then maybe hopefully in the end. Encourage people to move here, the land is still really cheap here. And, um, I think that once we get the corner, infrastructure, town hall, everything back on track, I think that, uh. It may, it may be of interest to them to think in the movie here, enjoy the beauty.
Um, thank you. My, my next additional new business is something I'm going back to, that's also, wherever it is, we are planning since the midnight. Back around to afternoon, going to have a final, sign the orders and ban the town orders that is current of today, we're glad to accept. So, um, they will present that, I will be asking you guys, the time that you can come into the town, I'll show you before our auction. And I guess when, um, I'll be ready to present at the auction for adoption. And we, and it will finally upstate, up, up to, oh, and what we're in the part of the state, just such for sounding and. But, that's it. It's been a, it's been a long process, but, um. But hopefully that we'll, everything will, um, place, um, Thursday, and then I'll give you guys, in the future, some reviewing and. We'll have our code here. And yeah, there are steps to process, once, once you have everything here, then you'll have our code here, and hopefully we'll be able to, um, be ready to adopt it and all. All right, finally, the motion to approve the new business. I have a motion to. That's it. Um, hey, um, you ready for it? All right, we have it since the. Sorry, no, sorry, no, all right. Then, then that's it, um, the motion to approve the public, the second public comment portion.
All right, second motion.
Um, thank you, um, you ready for it? All right. Well, any comments from myself and officials? Start down, let's start down to the lady.
Um, glad everybody showed up and showed up, um. Uh, hopefully everybody that's here can all get into meeting and, um, tell the brand, tell the brand, and hopefully have a better turnout.
Glad you're back to come and, um, we look forward to continuing working with that plan. Um, I was excited to see y'all, ready to just live on the way out, we like that, good to see you here.
Um, this is Norm, I hear about, hi, um, just for monitoring, uh, tomorrow, we need to draw a big, they have your names, we have our shirts, or somebody.
Well, thank you all for coming, um, please make sure if you have a neighbor or if you have a neighbor who did new letter. Or does that, you try to pass him out, that they don't turn on with that. And also, if you have a neighbor, anybody who knows that has those old broken green trash cans, please let them know the date, the Sunday fourteen. They'll throw out by that evening, they'll be picked up that Monday, um, they get out there, they'll not be one hundred yards, looking for it, they'll be on the street. So if you see, you know, anybody that's got this, tell them they can drag it out, if somebody who's not able to drag it out, please help them, um. If you can, let us know, and we'll be able to be sure to get it straight, because it can be really nice to call that, you know, taking the. Um, thank you all for coming. Our next regular monthly meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, um, so, at six thirty, we put in the, the volunteer fire department. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna see if you like this prize, um, and stop there, that we are surprised, I know people can give, be very gracious. Um, and be welcome to let us, we used to do the fire department, so we see, so we really know all of us, we really appreciate. And let us come there. Um, there will be a workshop meeting on Tuesday, twenty third, twenty twenty, twenty twenty four, it's six thirty, I'm not, not sure. I'd like to say a little bit about that, um, so everybody understands what's going on. When we, when first Friday in December, um, we had two brand new commissioners, and it's me and, and. Mr. Man, and we, um, you know, knew how we fit and moved first morning. Um, most of you know that there was no transition from the old, there wasn't a cloak, um, they would do a white company meeting. So there is so much that we need to learn and we need to know, so we thought about this, we tried it in December, January. And we had, we called up more workshop, so things that come up, like the trains that we need to go to, um. Things that they need to do, we have different information, it's, it's really, I guess, I'm still a teacher, right? Still like a teacher, what they, you know, it's, it gives us opportunity to meet with the board, to go over some of these things, to say, hey, this train is some nuts, this is about. Or, um, just learning the book, so to speak. to go over some of these things, to say, hey, this train is something else, this is about, or, um, just learning the book, so to speak. Um, there's nothing secret, there's nothing, you know, going after those meetings, other than making sure everybody's on the same page and everybody knows and we're doing what we're required to do, we're required to do. So, that being said, um, don't, don't wonder like, oh, we have a, we have a board meeting, but we're not. But the board meeting, so we said, you know, the, we have workshops that are like training and, and things for us. Some of it might be like, we have some chairs and we can, you know, they're, oh, it's a claim, we want to play chairs for them, stuff like that. So we're, we're building a library, we have about a thousand books, um, those are usually standing in that, so it's probably some of that kind of thing that's going on. Um, because honestly, Jimmy comes on Tuesdays, Thursdays, we're killing now, and we are jamming that, smiling that. Um, on those two days, those four hours, and then, um, and, and I'm, I'm flesh and power to achieve it, so, and then it's free. Um, there was something in your head last week and before that, except for four. Um, and these are things that I go to retain, that I need to share that information with the board. And when they go to a training, they need to share with us, so we can share the community and, and so on. Um, for example, tomorrow, I have two certain people, it's one I think about today, they fly into a team tomorrow at ten o'clock. Uh, others who may can argue about it, it's tomorrow at ten o'clock. So my plan here is to, I'll be zooming on my phone over here, and zooming on laptop right here, and hope I can get what I get for both of them. If not, I'll reach out and say, hey, I have two point, send the information. Um, most of the time, you know, I've had time this year, I can just zoom in, draw, but sometimes I just want to get it today. Send emails and say, hey, we want you to zoom in for a team tour. So that's what we do when, plus the things that, um, for our new building and those that we have, thanks. About that being said, I hope everybody has an understanding of what we're doing, what we're doing. And I'd like the motion to, uh, adjourn, maybe you can close my. Oh, I had two more comments. Oh, my goodness, I didn't do the close comments, I thought I, let you close for, for your close comments. On paper? Are you, are you ready? See if you can get into a, um, and they, uh, and, um, so now the motion to adjourn.
And we want to get there, maybe.
I'll say.
On paper? Are you ready?